At the end of last meeting, I did ask for a 10-minute recess, which you granted, thank you. I would like to get through this meeting. So can I please ask for everybody to be as civil and as kind to each other so we can get through this meeting and respectfully address the items on the agenda? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Middlebrook. Next on the agenda this evening, we have the financial documents to authorise payments for December. Don't go too far. councillor Adams.
Once again, I find the finance documents are incorrect, so I would suggest that we adjourn any decisions on that. Thank you.
Is that proposal to defer?
It is. Which, which? The finance documents, period. I mean, it's definitely the payments one.
Do you highlight particular ones?
Sorry?
Which particular payments is it?
Well, I can't tell you specific ones off the top of my head.
Can I just ask the clerk, before that motion is put forward, does that mean we will not be paying any of our predators this month?
So when you, if these are the payments to be made, or they have to be made, so...
They have been made, right?
No, well, they may have been made.
They have been made, yeah?
Yeah, they have been made.
Yeah, so...
So we're approving them?
Yeah. Well, you're not approving payments, because what happens with these is a contract's been set up, so you're obliged to pay them. What the councillors will do is you're checking that what has been purchased under delegated authority by the clerk during the government data day activities are legitimate expenses for the council. Okay, so that's what, that's what you're doing. So you're not approving anything because the contract's been made, so they have to be paid because the contract's been made. So you're just reviewing them. Like with our councillors, councillors have the right to see any invoices they wish to see, so you could ask for that. I'm proving they're not here now, but I'm sure they could be provided if you've got any questions. So I would say if you've got any questions specific to the payments to be made, anything you're not happy with, probably the easiest way is to put details together in an email, I'm sure the clerk can answer.
councillor Middlebrook.
I did have one question, and it relates to the football club, is that within the actual year-to-date costs, there are figures of income and expenditure, but within the current annual budget, there are no figures or nil. So as we've, as a council, had ownership of the builder for a long time, I'm just surprised there isn't a figure in as a budget, or am I misreading the figures? They are page four, halfway down, Albroa Town Football Club. Income and expenditure, first line and second line. Maybe I'm financially illiterate or whatever, but it just doesn't seem right to me as I'm reading it.
Which one do you mean? Are you looking at the higher the bono, or the...
No, well, it refers to Albroa Town Football Club, bono building bar higher, pay per session, booking fees, and then costs, water, electricity, maintenance.
Yeah, so if I, if I may, because we've just fast-forwarded a little bit, so the first is AI on the agenda, which is the payments, the payments schedule.
Yep, so am I looking at the wrong bit?
No, you've just gone forward to the income and expenditure, which is the fifth one down. So if we just take them one at a time rather than on block?
Fine.
So the first one is the authorisation of December payments. Now councillor Adams has obviously said that he thinks there's a discrepancy, he's not been able to say what that discrepancy is.
I can tell you one of the discrepancies immediately. The Mitsubishi we've got, actually we've only got one, is that correct?
No, there's two.
So do we MOT one in November and one in October then?
They've been purchased at different times.
I'm just asking, I didn't ask whether they're purchased at different times. I'm asking if we MOT both vehicles, one in October and one in November. The information we get on these sheets isn't, doesn't clarify what vehicle was MOT. All I can see is an MOT on the Mitsubishi twice, in two months.
Well, that's a fair question to ask, yes. So I'll have an email to the clerk, I'm sure she'll be able to...
We should go through the rules, please.
Okay, so the schedule that we have presented for us tonight, that's one query that you can raise with the clerk.
Agreed with me.
Is there a proposal in second, is there acceptance this evening, or would people like them deferred?
Are these payments that have been made?
Yeah, you're not really approving, you're not really approving.
These have been made.
It's your opportunity to question them and, you know, ask the questions, like I said, and then be backing them back. So, you know, how, you know, you can't, you can't really defer them for a month if they've got, if you've got invoices in and you've got a contract with people, so...
But these have already been paid.
And the payments are...
They've already been paid, okay, yeah. So you're acknowledging that you've seen them?
I'm acknowledging that, I've seen them.
You have the chance to see them, correct? You have the chance to question them.
Yeah, thank you.
But assuming that you're going to get answers to the, you're going to raise your proposal raised in an email to the clerk, and she'll be able to give you an answer about the contingency issues.
I've raised lots of emails to the clerk, which hasn't answered one yet, it's going back to July, so I'm going to hold my breath while I wait for them to be answered.
Okay, moving on.
Swiftly.
Okay, so...
You're approving payments?
We're approving payments. Can I have a proposal, please? councillor Middlebrook, seconded by councillor Dalton, and all the papers. That is carried.
Could that be recorded, please?
A recorded page?
Hands up here, please. Thank God, hang on a second.
Next we have the direct debits, are there any queries? If not, can I have a proposal to accept? councillor Reynolds, seconded by councillor Dalton, and show of hands, please. That is carried by majority. Next is the income for acceptance and approval, any queries?
That's the person next.
Can I have a second, please? councillor S Taylor, and a show of hands, please. That is carried. Next is petty cash, that's for information, is there any queries?
Shouldn't there be little chips that people can see what the petty cash is spent on? Because when I had petty cash in my, every penny had to be accounted for. There's even cash sale for spirits from Sainsbury's on the list, and I just find that somebody could do that quite strange. There's no, you know, and that's up to £400 a month, and it often is, there's never anything to say what it's been spent on. It could have been spent on dishes and chips down the corner, all I know, but we don't know, and they're supposed to be produced, these figures.
They're registered, registered on what the petty cash is spent on, is provided every month, and councillor Reynolds into your mess.
Well, if you can follow that, you're a good person.
And she does check the payments against the receipts.
All the receipts against the invoices when I go in the office, so that all the receipts are all there.
That's all I asked.
Against the...
Next is the income and expenditure, sorry?
I'm sorry, on that note, obviously we've previously asked the copper's bank statements to be issued every month with meeting papers, because we used to have them, but then they're stopped.
Do they not go to GP&amp;F?
I don't know, because it was asked. We asked the clerk last month, but obviously we haven't received them since the 20-year old...
I think they go to the general purpose finance committee.
Not in the meeting papers, because I remember seeing them at my early stages of being councillor, and then they stopped. I just want to, sadly corrected, I just want to clarify.
We can raise that.
Thank you.
councillor Middlebrook.
Yeah. Page four of the detail, the income and expenditure with regards to the football club. It's just for the annual year-to-date, there are costs, but there is no annual budget appears to be for those items, just a series of no's, just wondering why. Surely we knew we would have to spend money, and therefore we would have put it aside in the budget. It's just, I may be reading it wrong, but...
councillor S Taylor.
I was just going to say, is that because, like, these columns are previous years, and obviously we only took it back this time last year, so we wouldn't have previously budgeted for those repairs, because it wasn't in our maintenance schedule? I don't know if that's correct.
That sounds plausible, but I think you're...
But I'm asking.
Can that question be asked, please? Just to me, you're spending money not against the budget, when you knew you had to build it, that's, that's the only way I'm reading it, that's all.
I would like that to show. councillor Adams.
Can I just say that actually with regard to the bono building, we have spent £62,564.8 on it, and we have received an income to date, year-to-date, of £5,063.
councillor Burrows.
One of the items on the bono building, it says, bono building bar agreement, 1,000 something, hard to read, nearly 2,000, who does that pay to and what's it for?
That is paid from Albroa Town Football Club to the town council. So that's income. councillor S Taylor.
Can I just go back to the expenditure on the bono building, and I believe I did give an explanation in a GP&amp;F meeting not so long ago. Obviously, the building was never in our maintenance schedule, because we had people that were tenants of the building. We have since taken that building back. It was not compliant with health and safety, it was not compliant for disability use and access, so those figures, that big expenditure, is big, because we've had to put disabled toilets in, we've had to have new windows put in, we've had the roof refitted, we've had to have the showers done. All of this maintenance and upkeep has been done with a view that the building can be used more, is better used to our community, is better used to our clubs and groups, and that is actually what this council is here to do, to support and give facilities that are inclusive and meet health and safety guidance and legislation, and that is why there's been such a big expenditure in the last year-to-date, because we have recently taken it back, and all of those were issues that needed addressing.
Thank you. I think it's important as well to make clear that that is a one-off investment, it's not going to be a recurring cost to the council. Now that cost has been made, that will be an investment for years to come, and over those years, the investment will return. And is there any other queries?
Just one quick one here, then, in that case, who are we actually approaching to use, to get them to use the bono building apart from the football club? Because I don't see an awful lot of income from that bono centre, because basically it's down to the football club and the football club only, who appear to be the only ones using it, as far as I can see.
There are other regular users at that facility.
We have a metal detecting group that use it.
Ones?
No, they use it regularly.
They use it every month.
And we've had baby showers in there, we had a birthday party in there, three weeks ago there was a birthday party, but now the improvements are nearly at an end for kitchen, is nearly, it will be marketed hard. It hasn't been marketed whilst the work's been going on, but there have been groups and functions that have been used there.
So can we have noticed of the people that are using it then? Because as far as I can see, certainly as far as the accounts are concerned, the only people that seem to be putting any input into that is the football club.
That's true. Yes, I'm sure the clerk could provide you with a schedule of the bookings. Actually, I think they should be on the town council's website.
It should be, yes.
Well, I think they are, I think when there is something in there, it does show on our calendar. But in any event, as councillor S Taylor has said, at present, it's not been marketed and promoted to the best of its ability, because those works have been ongoing, the hob is the final thing that needs installing in the kitchen. Once that is done, I think there was some snatch work that needed revisiting, but I think once that is all complete, then it will be promoted and advertised as a venue for hire available to the community, and those bookings should then hopefully be... On that note, we'll move on, because that was for information only. And next on the agenda, we have item nine, which is the town centre CCTV, to consider a draft motion, proposal amendments for shop fund, grants policy, inclusion of CCTV installations for... Obviously, we had a question raised during public participation about the council's, I would say, abilities and processes in obviously allocating public funds to a grant that supports obviously business. I know it's outlined in the motion that actually it would be of benefit to residents as well, but could you just add to that, please?
Well, yeah, as I understand, you have the general power competence, so you could do anything that an individual can do in that way. So, yeah, so you can choose to do it if you wish to do it, if you see the benefit in it, or if you're normal.
councillor Burcham.
Should the amendment not go on through standard orders, please, first, or?
No.
No? Is it possible we can put that on the next standard orders to review? Because very much cut and paste, the actual policy doesn't really make sense itself. In goes the business.
I have no objections to that. councillor Middlebrook.
It says, under the amendment, businesses within the designated grant area. So can we confirm where the grant area is, please?
The existing grant policy only applies to town centre businesses, if you'd want it to extend beyond the town centre, obviously that would require...
So how far?
So what is the town centre?
Does the town centre, is it, I mean, does it go as far as the cock? Does it go to the...
I would have thought so.
Yeah.
Does it go on as far as the snooty club, you know?
I don't know what your policy is, but I mean, if I was doing it, I'd be looking at the Breckham local plan and seeing what the designated town centre is with the local plan, because you usually...
It'd just be nice to know who's able, if we approve this, who would be able to apply for the grant. I think the more cameras we get, the better.
So am I right in summary? councillor Burcham, you would like to see the amendment within the existing policy, maybe so inserted and then highlighted with the recommended amendments?
Just go ahead and...
And you would like an inclusion to show specifically what that zone is?
I'd just like to know where the area is.
Okay.
So that any shop premises will know whether they're inside the line or outside the line, therefore they can apply.
Mark, I'm very happy for it to be deferred to the standard order review committee meeting, subject to obviously the comments received from councillors this evening. So is the department, you're proposing the department, and to the committee, you're second in that?
Yeah.
And can I have a show of hands, please? That's very fine, the honour.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have item 10, which is finance, to consider the draft budget precept, 2026, 2027, consideration and resolution. councillor Burcham.
As I was asked, obviously the budget itself, just for elections only, obviously has gone up from eight to 52,000. Obviously, we've established what, but at the moment, nothing's been paid out to date, i.e. the elections. Obviously, where will that money come from when it is paid out? Because obviously it's not budgeted.
I would have thought...
Well, if it's not budgeted for, then that would just come out general reserves.
Yeah.
Okay. And secondly, obviously, according to like the option for that was passed to purchase the car parks, that should be completed by March 26th, so therefore, there's been no allowance for the maintenance costs of the car parks in this year's budget or next year's budget, the cleaning, staffing costs, ticket machines, et cetera, et cetera. So is that going to be added in?
I couldn't say, but yeah, that has to be added in. But again, if it's added in, then that would just come out general reserves for next year, if you don't make allowance for it.
Because at the moment, we won't know what that is to do with it.
Yeah, so I think that's probably why, because we haven't determined yet that maintenance schedule would look like, and you can't say how much it's going to cost, because obviously how Breckham need to do it at present might not be how the town council do it, so I think it would be hard to insert the figure, but if not, if they're down the line as well, if there's under spends, am I right in saying that payments can be made as well to make amications?
Yeah, you can move money around, yeah. I mean, you could say, actually, you know, there's a risk, we don't know what it is, and we'll make an allowance, you know, increase the precept a little bit more to make an allowance for that, you put aside to do that. You're going to have to know exactly what the costs are, you know there's going to be some costs, so you could make an allowance for that.
I think as well, it's probably going to take a while to come to completion anyway, and also that car park is in good condition, so hopefully there wouldn't be...
Yeah, and a big cost straight off, yeah. I mean, we're in the same voted era, you know, we're suddenly thinking, oh, we'll just try something, see how it goes for a year, and then we'll know the cost in a year's time, a year's time, and to make further details.
Thank you.
Did anyone else have their hand up? Oh, councillor Middlebrook.
No, well, councillor Adams was there first.
Oh, councillor Adams.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, having only received the updated copy today of the budget precept, I haven't been able to go through it, and I'm sure most of the people around this table haven't been able to go through it all either. So can we sort of postpone things until the next meeting, or...
Yeah, I had had it before today, though.
Well, I got mine today.
councillor Middlebrook.
The only thing I was going to ask, because obviously it's referred to in the clerk's report, which I know is later in the agenda, but it refers to the precept that we're, that here we've been asked for consideration and resolution. Can we confirm that actually for the band D, which is where it's all the council taxes are set, is that the increase per household, although Sharon in her report has put £6 per household, is actually the difference between last year, which is £167.99, and £173.66, which is £5.67 increase per year to approve this precept? Is that what we've been asked to do?
Yeah.
Good, thank you. Which is 3.37% increase, which is about inflation. Thank you.
And are you happy with the...
I mean, I haven't been through all the figures and where they go, although I know there is reference to the splash page, which I would like to, obviously, as we will discuss later on. But because it's in there, and the wording of item 15, I'm happy for that splash page to stay there, but as you've said, money can be moved from one to another, which is why I'd be happy for it to stay in there, but maybe be used for another purpose in a later time.
Yeah. I will say as well, I mean, if you'd, if anyone would feel more comfortable agreeing the budget at a later date, the January meeting will not be too late to get the precept request in. So there is also that to consider, so it could, it could be deferred to the next meeting if councillors felt more comfortable with that.
Yeah, can we propose that, please? Just give a little bit longer.
I think councillor Adams proposed, so it's...
Second, yeah, yeah.
And then take that vote. I'm happy to do that.
I'm happy to go.
It's not going to...
That's my question.
Indeed, on time instructions.
Yeah, and I think, you know, if you've got concerns, if you've got questions, get these, so everyone will be ready to be pressed on the next meeting.
Next on the agenda this evening, we have item 11, which is the caretakers subcontracted terms, and this is, it says for review, but it's for information. Did Sharon brief you on this?
Uh, yes.
I'll hand over to you then.
Oh, wow.
Thank you.
Well, I don't know how full of briefing it was. So as I understand it, you've got caretaker under contract, who's also a councillor, and this is an update on the contract that he has with you. So I don't know full details, but I know from my own experience of having, running halls, if you've got a caretaker who's helpful, you've got a goldmine, because it's really hard to find people who come out and drop a hat.
I know, because I proposed it. It wasn't actually for information, it was a review of the contract that I proposed. So can I ask why that hasn't been upheld on the agenda?
What places did you want to review the contract?
I don't know, if you've, if you're in touch with the town at all.
Do you want me to speak on your...
No, no. I proposed we suspend standing orders.
If you want.
I mean, I'm going to stay in the situation. A councillor broke my window, right? He's also a caretaker. I asked Andy Westby...
Oh, no, no. I asked Andy Westby as the mayor.
Can I just say, can you...
But we're not, otherwise, we...
No, I'm going to get through this meeting.
Because I know what you're going to do, you're going to do that.
Because it's not public participation, and you don't have any right to participate at this point.
That's fine.
Can I propose that we suspend standing orders to let mister Allenson speak, please? Yes.
Thank you. And can I have a show of hands, please?
Thank you.
Carry on.
Basically, a councillor broke my shop window, right? He's also a caretaker. I understand through all the council process that he doesn't have to stand down as a councillor, even though he's been convicted of a crime. What I asked Andy Westby was, I as a resident who pay tax, council tax to this community, would like to know why he is still a town councillor. I don't want that person being my caretaker. I asked this question four weeks ago, Andy has not got back to me, I understand he's not very well, I understand why he hasn't, but I would like an answer to that question. And that may be why this review has been brought forward on a rolling contract.
I don't have the details of the contract, but if you've got a contract with somebody and they're doing that contract well, then...
Well, I think that's what mister Allen is now asking. He wants a review of that contract, and I'm just giving you the background of maybe why they want to review that.
Well, I suggest what councillor Allen does then is lay out in detail how he feels that, who's the caretaker's name? Mister Fraser, how he's not fulfilling his contractual obligations.
If you want me to do that, I can do that in one word.
I'll say that's a starting point.
I can do that in one very quick sentence for you. I don't think smashing windows and caretaker fit together in the same sentence.
Well, did you, you know, again, was that part, was that during his working, working time, or how was that?
I don't think it matters.
Okay.
I don't think it matters. If you do something wrong, you should be held accountable for it. Especially you're a, you're a local politician and caretaker. So, like I said at the last meeting, I requested we review the contract, and that be put on the agenda, and it hasn't. We have a request for information, but that was not what was proposed. I want a review of the contract.
So the item on the agenda this evening is for information. Sharon has provided a report reviewing his work to date for the council since that contract has been in place, and so that councillors are aware of that. If you would like a review for consideration, I think that then you need to follow the advice that's been presented.
I would suggest, I would suggest you lay it out in detail, what your agreements is, and I would then suggest that the council then takes advice on that, because you don't want to be challenged on acting emotionally with the council. So I would, yeah, so I would, you would need to set out in detail what your agreements is, why you think the contract should either be reviewed or ended, because you're on a three-month rolling contract, you choose to end it, why you think that should be ended. I would then suggest that that is, you get some advice on that, either legal advice or some other, some professional advice, some independent advice, to decide on whether what you have put forward is legitimate reason for ending the contract you have with this contractor.
And would it be fair as well to say that I think if you're going to do that, you also need to consider the pressures that that might apply to the rest of the staffing team, because our other caretaker is only part-time, doing 16 to 18 hours a week, and actually it could put stress on services, and we've struggled with improvement to that position and also keeping that position.
Don't we, don't we pay SF services more than we can pay a full-time caretaker?
In which way? A full-time caretaker, no?
Don't have to change.
No, you may well be, you may well be paying a second contract more.
We are?
Yes, you will be, because you're not cost sick pay, you're not paying holiday pay, and the risk of them, you know, if they don't turn up, you don't pay them, so...
Or extra contribution.
Or extra contribution, or extra contribution, or anything like that. So we have, we have the same, we have one caretaker, we pay him with salary, we have another temporary one... another temporary one who we pay as a contractor, and he's paid more than our normal caretaker, but we don't have to pay him sick pay, we don't have to pay him holiday pay, and all the rest of it.
Councillor Vatchen?
I can ask, with your contractors then, how the time sheet process, are they analysed or just paid out? Because, everybody's asked, because obviously I have questioned this with the clerk, who's openly said that they don't analyse the timesheets, they receive them, they pay them. So obviously, what robust systems will we have in place to ensure that the legitimacy of the timesheets are actually handed in the correct, factual and debate? At the moment, there isn't no robust system that's been contained.
All right. I can say I don't process them, but I have somebody who does process them, and, you know, we will check them, and from time to time, we wouldn't check them in detail every month, but if we're a bit, you know, if somebody sees them, and they'll know whether it corresponds with them, but on the whole, you know, people who work with us, we have a certain level of trust with them, and we trust them to do it. If we find that we're doing it wrong at any point, then they would be disciplined, and, you know, they might buy something, you know, so...
So am I right in saying that you're asking for deferment, and you're going to bring this up?
Yeah, I will defer, and, yeah, that's fine, come back for the next meeting.
Or, or my suggestion of, you put in your grievance in writing, you get some advice on it, and take it from there.
Yeah. Well, I would like to defer, so that this is on the next agenda, for consideration and resolution.
Thank you.
And I will do...
Do what you need to do. Once you've got the advice back, then bring it back to the...
I don't want that back to the information.
Yeah, once you've got the information back.
So just out of clarity, he would confirm whether that meets the criteria to be put on the agenda? Because a lot of agenda items have been dismissed by the clercs, we just want to get that clarified. Who's, who's the decision would that be?
The agenda?
Yeah. Just that meets the criteria, it will be on agenda now, unfortunately, I haven't got enough information, but whose responsibility would it be?
Well, it would, I suppose it depends on the resolution, depends on the information you've got back. But I would say, if you've, if you've put what you want to put in writing in detail, that's put to some, you know, a professional person who can look at it and say, does this meet the criteria for, for ending this contract? They may come back and say, no, it doesn't, in which case then, they can come back for information, say we reviewed it, and our professional advice is, this doesn't reach the threshold for either reviewing the contract or ending the contract. And they come back and go, yeah, that is a legitimate reason for ending the contract, in which case, say, no, it's just that, we come back to the councillors, or unless it's delegated, those sorts of issues are delegated to the clerk, I don't know, to then, you know, consider the contract. So I think it would depend on what you submit, and what your legal advisers tell you, is applicable for whatever you put forward, I don't know what you're going to put forward, a solicitor's going to say, or whatever advisor.
Mine must as well, cloud decision making, but thank you.
So once you, once we have that information, then you would know whether, whether it's something that comes back for a decision or comes back for information, so...
Councillor Taylor, can I, and councillor Dowell probably be able to support this? Previously, before this clerk, in previous clerks, all timesheets would be brought to personnel meetings, and if, like, the folders would be brought down, and if... Yeah, but the timesheets, so timesheets would come, and if members wanted to look through the folder, they was always welcome to look through that folder for scrutiny, and I actually, I objected to it when it stopped happening, and it's something that I actually think should, should be resurrected, that the folder is brought, and then if there are any queries, and it may well just be that maybe members might want to think that, do we need a new member of staff, because the grass cutting's taking X amount of the grounds team's time, and then you can look and see how much time is actually being spent on grass cutting and such. And I, I personally think that that was a good thing, that the folder was brought. Sometimes it was looked at, sometimes it wasn't, but I personally think that that's maybe something the Personnel Committee should take away, so as Chair of Personnel, I don't know if councillor Dowell would like to consider that.
We could agree with that.
Yeah, I'm agreeing, it'd be a very informative thing.
Okay, so we'll move away from this item then, and the emphasis is then on councillor Allen to present the grievance to the clerk, she would do the due diligence, and then, depending on that result, it will come back. I will go and treat councillor Fraser. Next, on the agenda this evening, we have item twelve, which is councillors' reports. Any councillors to report? Councillor Dalton?
Yeah, I met with the App Care Group on the twenty fourth. It was an hour-long meeting, and it was quite useful, some feedback on the local changes to NHS.
Councillor Burrows?
I'd just like to say that I volunteered yesterday at the Connoir Hall Carnival, and I just want to say how well it went, and how very organised it went, and I think it's something the town council should support wholeheartedly, that traditional event, as it was, very good, and it was well-attended, and just that, that should be noted, and we should, you know, go forward with that, and try and sort the mess out we've had this year.
Councillor Vatchen?
Yeah, I was echoing councillor Burrows, just myself, councillors Allen, Middlebrook and Burrows, Marshall at yesterday's council event, great day. Also, myself, councillor Allen, the stewardess and Adams, had a fantastic night volunteering at Fun Fest Charity Catwalk, great night had by all. Obviously, not sure how much was raised, but it was a very good night's charity.
Did you receive invitations in an official capacity, or is this just general volunteer that you done?
Well, I haven't seen an invitation, yeah.
Okay. I was just, I was just curious.
I got one too.
We were one too, yeah.
Yeah, well, why?
I have submitted my report in writing, just because I don't want to take up too much of your time. Councillor Sturn, are you going to report on it?
No, my report of my duties as a councillor has been submitted as well.
Can I ask where, where, I know you do a Facebook thing as Team Albra, where do your reports go?
So I have recently started submitting them in writing, but they are quite lengthy, so I...
But if they go to Sharon, how could...
They're on the website.
They go, they go with the main papers, yeah, they go with the main papers. To be honest, it would be nice if more councillors either did submit them in writing, because then they could be on the website as well, and I think there has been some queries lately about having those reports then presented on the town council's Facebook page, which is something that obviously can be reviewed, and if councillors are minded to present those reports to the council, could then be published. I think that we may need to have a conversation about that, and maybe that's something we can take to the Standing Order Review Committee meeting, to include in our social media and comments policy.
I mean, does this include just past events or future events to come? It's just that councillor Dowell and I on Wednesday will go to the Breckland Planning Draft Planning Policy South.
It's for councillors to report, so if you want to report on something that you're about to do, you can, and if you want to report on something that you've already done, then, but you'll be doing it. So if you'd like to say, I will on Wednesday be doing this, and then then give a detailed report on how that went. And obviously, this is an opportunity to do it, but I think as well, obviously, there has been a bit of noise lately about having, you know, town councillors' reports presented, and I think that maybe that's something that we can look at at the Standing Order Review Committee meeting, to include into the social media comments policy, that if councillors present a report as a town councillor, that can then be published on our town council social media, either as a collective or as individuals. Next on the agenda is the Clarks report, that was submitted in writing, I've just got a very short breath, in writing, and so ordinarily Sharon would read it. Do you want to read it? Or I think, I think everyone's, I think everyone's had an opportunity to review that. Next is item fourteen, which is Queen Square Way Leave Agreement for the Leisure Centre project, for consideration and resolution. Councillor Middlebrook?
It reads in the covering letter, the current proposal provides for all excavation and reinstatement works on your property to be carried out by the customer or their contractor, and then later in the same statement, it says, I confirm you will not incur any cost for the works. So if we're digging the trench and everything, why not?
Can I just give an update? I actually did attend in my official role the groundbreaking at the high school, so where they want to dig is literally just under the hedge, on the high school's side, so it's not actually in the cemetery, because I know a meeting that I wasn't at, yeah, I know, but how it is, is where the conifer is, it's under the conifer, and it's under the conifer that shows on the high school's side, it's not under the conifer that would show on the cemetery side. So that's where they would want to be digging, was what the contractor, when we was discussing it, because we discussed the way leave, and they, when they showed us, when we were there, because I was curious, because I hadn't been to a meeting here, but I knew it had been a discussion and some concern, so I did ask, and he was like, it's the conifer line, not actually any damage in the cemetery, it's the conifer boundary.
It just says it will be provided by the customer, so if we're providing it, presumably we're...
No, the customer is the contractor that is doing, carrying out the work, was my understanding, that the contractor, are you, you're in agreement?
Two statements just seem to be contradictory to me, but...
No, my understanding is the team that's been subcontracted to carry out the work will be carrying out the work.
On, on that basis, councillor Middlebrook, are you content with it?
Yeah, I mean, yes. I mean, I thought we'd agreed, exactly agreed that last time.
I think it might have just been because there was a bit of unclarity at the time, uncertainty at that meeting, but on that basis, it says for consideration and resolution, I don't recall...
Well, I mean, I'll, do we need to vote on it again? So I'll propose it.
Proposed by councillor Middlebrook, second by councillor Dalton, and did you have something to add, or was it accepted?
No, no, I was just trying to put my hand up.
Can I have a show of hands, please? Next on the agenda this evening, it is item fifteen, Splash Pad, to consider approval of the Splash Pad project forward for tender. Am I right in thinking that you asked for this item?
The options there, I, I asked the clerk if she would put these on the Open Spaces meeting, as I was then, or I'm now Chair at that meeting. The clerk said Breckland wanted to know sooner rather than later, and therefore she intended to put it on this committee, therefore I asked for the wording that I was going to put into the Open Spaces Committee to put into this committee. So the words, the options here are all from me, for discussion, debate, whatever. I have a personal view, which I'm happy to share now, if it's my turn to speak, and then obviously we can go through, so if it's my go.
Well, ju- just before that, I do have a letter that was sent to councillor Westby from councillor Sam Chapman Allen, who's the leader of Breckland Council, so I'll read that, just to inform the debate, and then we'll come back to what you want to make. So the letter says, and it should, should have been circulated, Dear councillor Westby, it was wonderful to participate in such an exciting occasion last Friday at the sports centre, and to recognise the initial joint investment of over two point five million in this significant upgrade and enhancement. It's great to see this project start its delivery phase, as this has been part of Breckland's long-term ambition to deliver leisure on the High Street, obviously in regard to the groundbreaking of the leisure centre. Another leisure project, which has been in discussion for some time, is the proposed Splash Pad at the Recreation Ground. In partnership with Albro Town Council, extensive consultation has been undertaken, including targeted work with local schools, Prostorf Highway and Albro Highway, involving four hundred and ninety pupils. As part of a pre-consultation exercise that received six hundred and ninety-five responses in total, of these, ninety-one point five supported, ninety-one point five percent supported introducing a Splash Pad. A broader town-wide consultation received a further two hundred and twenty-nine responses, bringing the total to eight hundred and eighty-eight. Work has been undertaken to identify the capital and ongoing revenue costs, potential locations, design options, project scope, and funding strategies for Albro Town Council. As previously agreed, Breckland Council will contribute up to one hundred thousand nine hundred pounds of market town initiative funds towards the project, subject to relevant approval. Given the budgetary considerations, complete impurities, and LGR, I am writing to ascertain if Albro Town Council is intending to deliver this project in the financial year twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven. Please can I request confirmation by the fifth of December twenty twenty-five, so budgets can be confirmed? Yours sincerely, Sam Chapman. So a definitive answer is required this evening.
Which writes on here, as opposed to being taken through to mine.
Thank you. So over to you.
Okay, this is my personal view. Firstly, I'd like to thank Megan Free, who is the Greater Albra Partnership Manager, for all the work she has put into this. However, on a personal note, we're not living in a South France, we're not living in a temperate climate, for something that is going to be open for May to September, five months only, for the costs that go into it, and the costs that the council will incur, although there will be grant, some grant funding, some of it is proposed, some of it is hopeful, together with the estimated running costs from the, one of the contractors, although through previous discussions, members of this council thought the costings for the water to come and the water disposal would be higher than that, but until the actual equipment is agreed, you couldn't actually find that agreement. We did discuss at the last meeting whether the actual, the water supply would be, the bar, the bar pressure would be sufficient to make it actually work. My view, personal view, is we should consider and vote on option two, which is to halt the design process and consider other projects. From that, I think we should go on to option three, which is to consider diverting the elements that are in the budget towards the country park, which is a very large area land that's either already come to us or is coming to us, which will be a phenomenal asset, to also consider the toilets on the rec and playground improvements that we have already discussed at the rec, and also at Norfolk Drive. So I personally would propose that we vote, or I would, or ask for option two, going on to option three. Thank you.
I'll come to councillor Susan first.
Thank you. So when this was first proposed a few years ago, I was all for the idea, I thought it was a great idea for children of this town. Having listened to the residents and the concerns that many have, I think it's a bad idea of our resources, I agree with councillor Middlebrook, that option two, or potentially option four, if it can be funded by the Sue as well, I don't think it's worth the amount that it's going to cost, potentially six hundred thousand a year. I just don't think that's, that's a good use of our funds, and as you said, the monthly usage is potentially limited, and also the number of respondents to the survey, I don't think justifies the cost either. So I would, I would go with option two or option four.
Can I just ask whether six hundred thousand a year has come from?
No, I think that's, I think, perch, councillor, because I think that was an error of course. Six hundred thousand in cost, because four thousand a year, as a minimum.
Yeah. And that cost would be the top end cost as well, a lot of, a lot of, and councillor Burrows?
Right. The water, we haven't established yet whether angry water can supply, and these splash pads do a minimum... And these splash pads do a minimum of a hundred and fifty gallons a minute. That is between seventy and a hundred and fifty gallons a minute. At the bottom end, seventy equates to twenty cubic metres an hour. And for six hours a day, water cost would be, they would be, per day for a hundred and twenty cubic metres would be three hundred and twenty-two pounds eighty. Now for disposal, for disposal, it's two, it's at two pound thirty-four a cubic metre, which around the water, so it's two hundred and eighty pounds eighty, if they use the minimum amount of water. So in seven days a week, that's two thousand two hundred and fifty-nine pounds just to supply the water. So that which is, that's water only, two thousand two hundred, but the combined bit per week, it's four thousand two hundred and twenty-five pounds.
Eat that mouth, because they're not listening.
Yeah, can we concentrate?
Eat it again.
We're concentrating, we're just clarifying points. The point I was making is, I don't think they just let the water go down the drain, I think they recycle the water.
The proposal is.
No, there is actually inclusion in the proposals to have a system that recycles the water.
Which is really expensive, because you have to treat it for some reason, and everything else.
It's really expensive, because we looked at something similar.
Yes, but the proposal to do that is just water in, water out, and we pay annual water. And at the current rates, that's what it is.
If we assume that we've got a fluid system that has been proposed here.
On this one, yeah.
On this one.
We have had alternatives.
At which the initial cost would be far in excess of the six hundred thousand.
And if you want a decision tonight.
Sorry, can we actually come back to having direction through the chair? And I don't think that councillor Burrows has finished making his points.
Well, no, I have, because using recycled water cuts down the expense quite a lot. But it's really expensive to do, because you've got to store it, treat it and recycle it. And if you don't, you're going to get salmonella and legionella, they're all the things, because they come from spray and everything else. And it's just, would make that so expensive just to produce that. It's got to be monitored, the system, you know, for the treatment of the water, as soon as it's out of kilter, it has to be shut down, so that we have to be monitored and it's expensive, really expensive.
Okay. Councillor St Taylor?
I'm not fast either way, I'm happy for members to defer this, but I do have a couple of comments. If we move the money from the splash pad to the Jubilee Wood, there's actually funding available for Jubilee Wood. So if we make that a resolution tonight, then that money will have to be spent on Jubilee Wood. So I would rather not add in the moving bit, move like, move the money over, I'd just like the money to stay in the reserves and not allocate it to a specific, like, specific project, because that will, that will naturally get well supported through funding, because woodlands and stuff do. And this, and my next bit is going to be a little bit facetious, and councillor Dale probably will be able to reiterate this. In the last twenty years, eight hundred and something residents consulting and engaging on a project is a major amount of residents to come back, is that not true councillor Dale?
Yeah, it is.
We normally struggle to get two hundred. And to put that into perspective for members, Thetford is twice our size and their consultation on their car parks only brought in just over three hundred residents. So we've actually, half the residents brought in double the amount. And I'm sure, I know councillor De Souza has had lots of people tell him that they're not happy, we've had lots of people in this room say they're not happy, but that doesn't equate to eight hundred and something residents that did. So if we vote against it, can I please request a recorded vote for the members that aren't going to listen to the majority that was eight hundred odd residents?
Excuse me, the eight hundred residents, four hundred and ninety from the Rillscroft Primary School.
They're not townspapers, but they are our future.
I think if you wave a splash pad in front of the kids, they're going to say they want it. So I do agree with councillor Burrows on that. I would like to second councillor Middlebrook's proposal to go for option two, but can I add that option three, perhaps an amendment to the agenda, and propose that the money be reallocated for CCTV in the town?
Ooh, controversial.
Instead of like councillor Taylor said, chucking at the Jubilee Wood project that already has funding, perhaps we could reallocate it for the cameras in the town? That's my suggestion.
What about this option two then, and consider all terms?
Can I actually just, I'll come to councillor Dale first.
When this first was muted, I thought, what a brilliant idea, great, you know, something that might bring people in. But when you actually look into it, and hygiene for one thing, you know, it's just lots of things. Vandalism, which I hate to say, we do have a little bit of, you know, and other things. The money that we were spending on that, and councillor Allen's just said about CCTV, I would have said we should allocate some of it to the Jubilee Wood, which is open from dawn to dusk, from birth to death, all weathers, twelve months of the year. And I think that would be a real asset for our town, you know, somewhere we haven't got parks, unfortunately. We haven't got many places to walk and that would be, I think, a real asset to the town. So I would definitely like to put some money that way.
Yeah, at the start, I was never a fan of this. Like I said, I think the money could be spent, it's bad because Megan spent so much time on this, you feel bad, but it's, it's just not going to work, it really isn't. It's just the cost is, that's only going to go up, water's only going to go up. And like I said, I just think we're going to suffer from hosepipe ban soon, and that's the first thing that's going to go out, is recreation. I think I echo Sam really, if we can bring that money back into the reserves and then we can decide where we can split it up, because Jubilee is going to swallow that money. You want drainage, you need drainage in there, land drainage.
And we've got sixty-four thousand coming in one oh six months, or that already is here. For the proposal, only so one frigging proposal, if you read through it, that sixty-four thousand isn't going to get it there.
It's not, but I think the point that councillor St Taylor was trying to make and correct me if I'm wrong, is that, that project, because of its nature, the nature of that project and what it will do for biodiversity and what it will do like for the town, it will be very, very easy to secure grant funding to fund that. So if you, and we could use this money as well, but I think what she was saying is, don't allocate it specifically for that, leave it with the freedom that you can take it at a late date if we need to.
I'm happy with that.
Without being so vague, like without being so specific. Fake, that's the one. Because actually you can at a later date make the allocation and leave it so that the funding's vaguely available.
I'm perfectly happy with that.
I think she was recommended.
In that case, I would own it, I would put forward, propose option two, full stop.
Option two, full stop. I've got the proposal, I've got a second up, can we move to the vote please? And I think a recorded vote was asked for.
I'm abstaining.
So, I'll let you take a minute to write those down. Is that an abstention, will you get?
It's an abstention.
Three abstentions. Thank you.
Can I, in that case, propose we defer option three to the next open spaces committee meeting?
I think you withdrew option three, didn't you?
Yeah. I was happy.
You could bring anything to your committee meeting, it's at your discretion.
Yeah, I mean, it was only like to discuss the reallocation of funding, that's all. Only to discuss reallocation of money for future projects.
I'll ask Sharon to put that on the open spaces committee.
It might be an idea as well to have a conversation with Sharon in advance of the budget coming to the next local council meeting as well now, in that respect. Next on the agenda is item sixteen, which is local government reorganisation consultation for consideration and resolution. Did anyone want to make any comments? We can make comments as a council or you can make comments in your individual capacities. Councillor Middlebrook?
Oh, it's only that, obviously the Breckland Council has joined forces and proposed a three, not three tier as in this way, but a three unitary split. So basically taking central Norfolk, which would be Norwich, and then east and west. If there's going to be a division of that, from my point of view, the smaller, sorry, the greater number of councils, councils in it, as opposed to one unitary authority based with Norwich as its head, with eight hundred million pounds worth of debt, is something we should vote as far away from as we can. If there is going to be reorganisation, taking it left, right and leave Norwich on its own, is my view.
So, so is what you're saying is the response from the town council should be that you support the proposal of Breckland Council?
If it's going to happen, then we should, my view is we should support Breckland, Kingsley and.
Yeah.
Whichever.
So that's a proposal.
That will be my proposal.
Secured by councillor Burrows and all in favour. Carry two abstentions. We have those two abstentions. That was myself. Next is public participation, we have ten minutes. Do we have any takers?
Just a quick one, I'm glad that you had your recess, because this meeting, I think, has been really good after that. I did ask a question of, it was kind of private after a meeting of yourself, councillor Taylor and the clerk was there. I discussed VAT. Now, you spoke about expenditure and costs and incomes for a town council. I did ask you that you had three car parks, three separate contractors. The one at the back was charged at twenty percent VAT. The Vono building, one was charged at twenty-four percent VAT, and the other part of the car park was charged, it was twenty-two thousand pounds, you charged one thousand four hundred pounds in VAT. Can you tell me why there was a discrepancy of the three VAT payments? I can understand it if it was for disabilities, but I think as a charity, if you say it's a charity, that relates to certain things. The other point is, you have invoices from an accountant, oh sorry, a solicitor for twelve thousand pounds, there is no VAT charge on it. Did that solicitor pay for the works and then you reimburse them? And that is the only way there is a VAT chargeable. And the third one is, you also have an account with Macro, correct? Why are not all the bills charged with VAT? Some are, some aren't. What are you purchasing on a trade card that is not ratable?
I don't have the answers to those questions.
These are quite simple things I've picked up, I can forward all of my information to Sharon, it's all in the public domain.
If you forward it to Sharon, can you do me a favour? Can you copy me and Andy in and then we can ensure you get a response? Because I know that you raised the question about the car park VAT at the end of the last meeting.
I did a little bit more.
And if you've not had a response.
All I'm thinking is, if the VAT is wrong, we are paying for it or?
The town council do get all the VAT back, so any VAT.
If you're not claiming it as VAT, you're not claiming it back.
Yeah.
What I'm telling is, us as residents are the ones that stand in the cost, the VAT that you are not paying it back.
Yeah.
I was just going to say, any discrepancy that might have been identified for this car park, that all may well be.
No, that wasn't.
I was just going to say, as a resident actually, a resident actually did contribute quite a large amount of money.
That was saying on twenty percent. It was strange. I mean, I'm in business and I know that I have different VAT brackets for certain things. That did not fall into any VAT bracket. The percentage did not fall into any VAT bracket. I didn't understand why those VAT figures were wrong. Why, like I said at the time, if you've submitted that to HMRC on a faulty basis, it's incorrect, unless there's a reason why you're submitting incorrectly or correctly.
I would, the VAT in local councils is very complicated and.
No, I just want to know why there would be that discrepancy, but it could be falling into any bracket.
No, twenty percent is like an odd percentage, it doesn't seem right. I mean, we've been looking into it with regards to the car parks and whether it's, you know, it's whether you can recover VAT if you don't charge for the car parks or not. And I've got, I've had two different pieces of advice from two professional VAT advisors giving different advice.
I mean, it was basically to do with the charge from the contractor, what was charged. Now surely if they charged twenty percent on that, they'll charge twenty to twenty percent on the other one, unless there is some reason why the three, the three are split and they were different ratable amounts, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah. Just a quick question, will you have a date or we're asking a date for the site postponed at EGM? Is there a date?
So councillor?
I can answer that. So we have booked the Collat Hall for the twelfth of December, seven PM for a public meeting. So if anyone wants to come along, we will be able to say what we want there.
So it's not an EGM session?
No, it'll be a public meeting. Everyone's welcome, all councillors are welcome too, of course.
So what is night EGM today?
I can't answer that, because I don't know.
Okay. Any questions? I'll come to you first.
Yeah, with the unitary changes countywide proposals you're on the books at the moment, will that impact upon the next town council elections at all? And if not, when are those next election days?
May twenty twenty-seven.
Twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seven.
For the town council?
For the town council, maybe twenty twenty-seven.
Near two years away, Vera, yeah? Not a year?
Eighteen months. And there's nothing to say that that will be impacted? Uh, yes.
Just want to say, it was lovely to see the Vono car park open to the public and being used for the Christmas carnival this week. It's been empty for so long with the private car park signs on it. It was great to see it finally opened, the members of the public allowed to use it. Wonderful, you've got this great free car park, long may it continue.
Thank you. Any other takers? If not, I'll draw the meeting to a close. Meeting, oh, hang on, one more, oh, yes.
I just want to say with Jacob, it was mentioned, it was decided that we would be having a discussion about the asset services and it wasn't just for information only. And as far as I can see, people are still kicking this can down the road when they should do the decent thing and actually listen to the public. Of course, you would have heard had you turned up to the EGM, which you all cited as boycott because of the bullshit reason. So.
Can I actually ask you?
You can, sorry, so I swear, I apologize, Taylor, immensely.
I'm going to the meeting, so, meeting closed.